Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to today's meeting of Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole Joint Committee. I'm councillor Janet Walton and I'm chairman of this joint committee. Members and officers have their names in front of them for ease of reference, but I've had a request for introductions and from which authority we're from, so I will do that after I've finished this little bit of information. In order to assist in the process today, I must ask everyone to ensure that mobile phones are either switched off or on silent mode. We would be grateful if you could remain quiet whilst the meeting is in progress. I would like to remind everyone present that this meeting will be filmed and broadcast live on the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. If you are seated in the chamber, it is possible that the cameras will capture your image. By your presence, you are deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting and/or training purposes. As chairman of this meeting, I can at my discretion terminate or suspend filming if, in my opinion, continuing to do so would prejudice the proceedings of the meeting or if I considered that continued filming might infringe the rights of any individual or breach in any statutory provision. Finally, there are no planned fire drills for this morning. If a fire alarm sounds, please evacuate the building immediately via the emergency exit. So if we can then go to introductions, I think I have introduced myself, so if I go to my right and we'll go around the table.
Good morning, Jane Portman, Managing Director of Bournemouth Council.
Good morning, Andrew Flockhart, Chief Executive of Poole Council.
Good morning, John Beazley, Leader of Bournemouth Council and Vice Chairman of the Joint Committee.
Councillor Mike Green from Bournemouth Council.
Good morning, Councillor Philip Broadhead from Bournemouth Council.
Councillor Karen Ranjin from Borough of Poole.
Councillor Drew Mallow from Borough of Poole.
Good morning, Councillor Jane Kelly from Bournemouth.
Councillor Anne Filer from Bournemouth.
Councillor Bob Lawton from Bournemouth.
Councillor Mike White, Poole.
Councillor May Haynes, Borough of Poole.
Councillor David Brown, Leader of the Liberal Democrat Group, Borough of Poole.
David Jones, County Councillor for the Burton Grange Division, Dorset County Council.
Debbie Ward, Chief Executive from Dorset County Council.
Councillor Deborah Cronie, Dorset County Council.
Councillor Pat Oakley from Bournemouth.
Councillor Blair Crawford from Bournemouth.
David McIntosh, Chief Executive, Christchurch Borough Council.
Councillor David Flagg, Leader of Christchurch Borough Council. I'd like to give you all a warm welcome to here in Christchurch in this festive season. Thank you.
Councillor Trish Jameson, Deputy Leader of Christchurch Borough Council.
Karen Tompkins, Head of Democratic Services for both Bournemouth and Poole and support to the Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole Joint Committee.
Tanya Coulter, Monitoring Officer for Bournemouth and Poole and providing support to the Joint Committee.
Thank you very much, and just to finish my introduction, obviously I'm from Poole and I'm the leader there. So I now hand over to Mrs Tompkins for a bit of housekeeping.
Many thanks, Chairman. If I can refer members to item one on the agenda and deal with the apologies and notification of substitute members for this meeting, can I report that I've received apologies from Councillor John Chaloner, Borough of Poole, and can I welcome Councillor Mike White as his substitute for this meeting? Can I report apologies from Councillors Nicola Green, Bournemouth Council, and Councillor Beverley Dunlop, Bournemouth Council, and advise you that both Councillor Pat Oakley and Councillor Anne Filer are here substituting for those two members? That concludes apologies and substitute members, Chairman. Item two, declarations of interest. Can I ask members to make any declarations of interest in respect of the issues that you have before you this morning? None notified, Chairman. Moving on to item three, the minutes of the last joint committee meeting held on the 21st of November are included within the agenda bundle. Matter for the Joint Committee as to whether you're happy to confirm those minutes, Chairman.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. On page two of the minutes, we have the clarification at item 16. I think it's a little ambiguous that the appropriate representation from Dorset County Council was two cabinet members. Now, I know it says that one of which was named substitute for the Joint Committee, but I think I am here as a, whatever the category is, member fully appointed by the County Council as a full member of the committee to speak and vote on desegregation issues. The, at least one person has said, 'Oh, I see you've been kicked off the committee then, and I'm still here.' Whether or not that pleases people, I don't know, but I still am.
Thank you for that, Councillor Jones. I did not think you in any way kicked off the committee, so, and you are still here. So I'm sorry if there was any ambiguity, but no, there's no case of you being removed from this committee in any way or any intention to do so.
I'm not doing it right, then.
So, David Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick query on the minutes. I'd just note that when the minutes are on the Joint Committee's website, they're just listed as the minutes of the meeting. I'd be grateful if a note could be made that they are the draft minutes of the meeting, subject to confirmation at the next meeting, because otherwise members of the public or anybody could sort of print them off and think, 'Right, that's that.' And if anybody's got an issue with anything there later, then it wouldn't be clear, so...
Thank you. I think that's a valid point, and we can make those arrangements. Are there any other comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, we can move on then. Right, so we're now moving to...
It's not a query on these minutes, but it is a matter that has come to my concern. I believe that, well, I know that a number of members of the public sought to ask questions, and I have been told that the response was that as we were following the standing orders or constitution or whatever the Bournemouth Borough Council, then that was not allowed. However, I can't find in the minutes of the October meeting, when, as I understand it, it was said that the decision was taken to follow the Bournemouth standing orders of constitution, any reference to that being accepted. I wonder if this point, because it is something, I think, that is important, that we do know exactly where we stand.
I shall ask our Monitoring Officer to address that for us.
Just for a point of clarification first of all, the questions were put by members of Christchurch Borough Council as opposed to purely members of the public, and it's that distinction that the constitution in Bournemouth has in place in relation to public questions. I can go on to the reasons for that if necessary, but I think your point is more about how and whether this joint committee agreed to adopt the Bournemouth constitution in order to conduct its work. I clearly recall, and we have a note, that at that first meeting, that was indeed agreed. But, Chairman, if you want to confirm that and discuss that today, then that would be open to the committee.
Okay. Is everyone happy with that? It would just be reaffirming what we decided before. Okay, it seems that everyone's happy with that situation then. So shall we then move to the questions? Right, so Dr Roger, would you like to come to the, in the corner here, the two chairs that are available?
Can the committee acknowledge that last month's verbal report from the Tax Harmonisation Task and Finish Group, confirmed this month by the written report, is wholly inconsistent with the analysis that informed last year's consultation? And can the committee therefore make steps to bring a proper resolution to these profound contradictions? Last year's consultation promised large savings from a super council. Indeed, this was the very reason given for super council. Yet these reports say that the now modest savings are almost all lost through tax harmonisation. This means super council will realise less funding than a single 1% increase in council tax, a pitifully small contribution towards boosting council revenues. And last year's consultation set out that a 3.99% annual tax increases would be inadequate to prevent large shortfalls in council funding. Yet the proposal set out in the task and finish reports would provide tens of millions less in revenue, annual increases averaging just 1.55%. This has to be even more hopelessly inadequate than with 3.99%. It is surely apparent that these profound contradictions require proper resolution.
Thank you, Dr Rogers. I'm going to ask Councillor Beazley as Chair of the Council Tax Harmonisation Task and Finish Group to give the response to that question.
Thank you, Chairman, and I thank Dr Rogers for his questions. At the outset, I should make it clear that I do not agree with the thrust of the questions which have been put to the Joint Committee. However, in responding to them, it does present an opportunity to restate the case as far as council tax harmonisation is concerned. I should highlight that the Council Tax Harmonisation Task and Finish Group will today be asking the Joint Committee to note the progress to date as outlined in the report presented at Agenda item nine. We will be recommending that a further update is provided once the disaggregation and medium-term financial plan work has progressed further. Therefore, I need to stress that the work of this task and finish group is ongoing and no decisions have yet been made, as it would be premature to do so. Of course, by law, local authorities can only increase council tax annually up to the cap predetermined by government without first having to obtain authority through a local referendum. As has been made clear, we have no intention of doing that. Rather, as the Joint Committee decided at its last meeting, we shall ensure that nobody will pay more than the government's referendum limits and that in the case of Christchurch, residents will see their council tax frozen or indeed even reduced in the period leading up to council tax harmonisation. Thereby, no resident will be worse off than if local government reorganisation had not taken place, and indeed, Christchurch residents will be better off from the start. Local partnerships assumed the increases would be capped at 1.99% per annum plus a 2% social care precept, making 3.99% in total. The latest advice from the Department of Communities and Local Government is to not assume the 2% social care precept, so 1.99% per annum will be the maximum amount. All local authorities with social care responsibilities are looking forward to the green paper due next year, which will outline the government's future funding strategy for social care. The future Dorset proposals are, of course, about much more than just the level of council tax across Dorset. Yes, of course, this is a great opportunity to cut costs and direct more of the scarce resources available to frontline services, but it also presents the opportunity to transform council services, to provide stronger, more efficient leadership, and thereby to generate even further savings in support of frontline services. Perhaps of even greater importance is the opportunity it offers all of us to be truly ambitious in building our economic activity for the wider area and to generate and enable a significant impact on the prospects for economic growth, jobs and inward investment in the future. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Beazley. So the next question is from Susan Chapman. Could she please come to, if she's here? Yes, she is. Thank you. Good morning. On 21st of November, two of us independently asked questions keen to ensure democratic engagement. In our answer to David Higgins, councillor Janet Walton spoke of having lost eight months and the challenge this presents. She also speaks of implementing best practice. Concern has been voiced in the press that green belt, amongst other things, may be compromised. Given the increasing alarm over climate impacts, predictions of diminishing harvests and more dependence on local resource provision, including clean energy, please can the committee assure us that the preservation of green spaces and providential planting now will be our top priority? Thank you for your question. The existing policies of the councils for Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole have been developed over many years to protect and enhance the environment, including the preservation and management of green spaces. These policies will be inherited by the new unitary council for the area. It will be the job of the new authority created for Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole to develop and improve these policies in a way that protects and enhances the environment across the whole area. Like all councils, the new authority will balance this priority with other policies and priorities such as social care and economic development. Thank you. Thank you. So Elliot Marks?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Elliot Marks, long-term Christchurch resident. My first question, am I talking too loud? There's a second question, which is my first question. The result of the Christchurch referendum clearly shows that the residents of Christchurch do not want to join a unitary authority with Bournemouth and Poole. Do the Bournemouth and Poole members of this joint committee intend to continue to force them to do so?
Thank you for your question. The local poll in Christchurch is a matter between Christchurch Borough Council and its residents. It will be for Christchurch Borough Council to decide how best to respond to the outcome of this poll. The proposal for local government reorganisation submitted in February is currently being considered by the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government. In November, he announced that, subject to parliamentary approval, he is minded to approve that proposal. He has indicated he will be making his final decision following the current period of representations, which closes on the 8th of January. Should the Secretary of State decide to approve the reorganisation proposal, it will be a matter for Parliament to consider during 2018. In the meantime, this joint committee will continue to work together in preparation for a decision. And I believe you have another question.
My second question, oh, sorry, everyone. My second question is, if Christchurch council were to be forcibly merged, a significant number of the current Christchurch residents will feel their interests and welfare have been sacrificed to the new unitary authority. The cabinet system of decision-making is unlikely to reassure those concerned about transparency and democratic representation. How can the Bournemouth and Poole members of the joint committee convince this Christchurch resident that our local democracy has not been extinguished? And by the way, many are deeply distrustful of the motives and lack of transparency of some of the individuals driving this merger forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So in response to that question, should there be a final decision to create a new unitary council to serve the residents of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole, it will be essential to ensure that all residents are fairly represented through the democratic arrangements established. This joint committee currently has established a task and finish group to carefully consider matters to be set out in the structural change order, and at today's meeting are considering whether to establish a task and finish group to also consider in detail electoral arrangements. It will be important to all residents that whatever arrangements are put in place, they are assured that they will be fairly represented and decisions made on their behalf are in their best interests. Thank you very much. That concludes that public question section of our agenda today. So then moving to Agenda item five, recommendations from overview and scrutiny panels. It is, Councillor Morgan, do you wish to inform us what these recommendations are, or would you like us to read them out?
Thank you, Chairman. In relation to item five, as you say, recommendations, and these are from the Bournemouth Borough Council Local Government Reorganisation/Shared Services ONS Panel, which met on the 11th of December. On consideration of the reports of the Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole Joint Committee, the Bournemouth LGR/Shared Services ONS Panel recommends that this task and finish group, sorry, that the task and finish group on civic functions includes consultation with present and past mayors to inform its recommendations. The panel also recommends that the committee is mindful of the need to promote the use of plain English in its reports in order to assist public understanding and engagement with the LGR programme.
Thank you, and I presume we'll be ensuring that they, those recommendations arrive at the right places to be taken into account. Thank you. Right, so we'll move to Agenda item, yes, Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. If I may offer a point of information to the committee, I am also Vice Chairman of the Christchurch Borough Council Scrutiny and Overview Committee. The chairman unfortunately is not here today. We met on Wednesday evening. It has not been, I think, possible to get the minutes of that meeting to members and the recommendations and points of concern which were raised. the recommendations and points of concern which were raised. But if the members of the committee are happy, I will ensure that all the members receive a copy of the minutes - well, the draft minutes, of course, as soon as they are available.
Thank you. Is that all right with everyone, that we receive those? I would presume it is. Yes. Thank you, councillor Green.
Madam Chairman, just a question about process, if you don't mind. Certainly within the Bournemouth Borough Council, I'm not sure whether it's true, but with the other borough councils, the purpose of those overview committees is to scrutinise the work of this joint committee. And as such, we would never have a member involved in the scrutiny when they themselves were the people being scrutinised. Is that not the case for Christchurch? Thank you.
Well, let's take some advice on that. Could you advise me that's for Christchurch? It's for Christchurch, apparently. Okay, so we'll leave it there. Okay, back to item six then. Right, so Mr Oskar Thorp, I believe you're presenting this for us. Thank you. This is on the programme update.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. Members, this report is intended to establish the template for any future programme overview reports. It covers the key activities since your last joint committee, as well as highlighting key activity planned between now and your next joint committee. It will also provide the means of escalating any risks, issues, budget or resourcing decisions that are appropriate for your role at the apex of the governance framework for the programme that you approved in your meeting on the 30th of October. In terms of the detail of this report, I do not intend to dwell on the highlighted activity as much of it appears on the face of your agenda today. However, I would draw your attention to the following points. Firstly, at this early stage of our programme, there are no risks, issues, budget or resourcing issues that require escalation for you to consider and resolve. Secondly, at your last joint committee, you agreed to participate in a workshop facilitated by the Local Government Association on the process and issues around the recruitment of a chief executive or equivalent for the shadow authority. It is proposed that this workshop takes place following your next joint committee on the 15th of January 2018 at 12:30. It is expected to last no more than two hours. Chair, I'm happy to respond to any questions that other members of the committee may have.
Thank you, Mr Oskar Thorp. Does anyone have any questions or comments relating to this item? Okay, it seems very clear and straightforward. Thank you very much for the preparation. So we'll go to the recommendations then. So I'll read them out because I'm sure there's perhaps not enough papers round the room. So, one, note the progress made since the last joint committee on approved work streams. Two, note the proposed activity to progress approved work streams in the lead up to the next joint committee. Three, note the format and content of this report to be used for future programme reporting. And four, note the proposed workshop with the Local Government Association following joint committee on the 15th of January. Those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Just to confirm, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. I think there's a little bit of confusion there, so I will read out in future, let you know which papers are for all members and which are for full members. So moving to agenda item seven. So the medium term financial plan, consolidated thereof. So Adam Richins, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And can I start by just introducing myself? My name is Adam Richins. I'm Chief Financial Officer for both Bournemouth and Poole councils. To introduce the report, in line with a report to the Joint Committee in October, this report provides a high-level overview of the medium term financial plans of those authorities which have a direct impact on a unitary authority covering the area of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole. That overview position is presented in figure one within the report. This provides a position for the unitary authorities of Bournemouth and Poole, and it also provides the position for the Borough Council of Christchurch. Figure two within the report provides the information for Dorset County Council. Taken together, these figures clearly show the continuing financial pressure on budgets for delivering services, particularly those with authorities for social care responsibility. There are a range of caveats in respect to this information, and they are set out in section eight in the report. They include the fact that it has not been possible to recast the MTFPs to ensure they are based on exactly the same assumptions. Although I should stress that the Bournemouth and Poole assumptions are broadly similar on account of having a shared financial services team. It may also be worth stressing that each council follows its own annual budget setting processes, which means they are all slightly different stages in confirming the decisions needed to ensure a balanced budget for 2018-19 can be presented. The report goes on to highlight the commitment to cooperate between councils and proposes that the relevant chief financial officers now highlight to their sovereign councils any decisions which will have an impact on the new unitary council. And once the shadow authority has been established, that those chief financial officers also highlight to this body any decisions which will have a significant financial risk to the new authority. Chair, I'm happy to take any further questions.
Thank you, Mr Richins. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this particular item? And this is for all members of the committee. Councillor Mrs Haynes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to reiterate a point that Mr Richins has already made, that in relation to figure one and particularly figure two, that that has to be read in the context of paragraph eight, particularly A, to note again that the figures are not, in the current present time, not able to be presented in a consistent format because Christchurch is not a unitary authority. So therefore, once the disaggregation work is done and is actually then reflected, I would expect that the position would change. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Haynes. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr Richins, for the report and update. Just wanted a couple of questions. Just firstly for clarification, at what point we may be able to get some understanding of the Dorset County Council element within sort of Christchurch Borough? And also, I note, obviously in point eight, the various caveats to the information that's provided. I note eight C, it says about the basis has been drawn together on a 4.99% council tax increase in 2018-19 for Bournemouth and Poole, £5 per year for Christchurch Borough Council. Could I just clarify for the 2019, 20 and 2020, 21 years, what council tax basis has been used for those future years?
Thank you, Mr Richins, if you'd like to respond.
If I can just highlight then with regards to C, with indeed the caveats, for the councils of Bournemouth and Poole, which is probably the only two councils that I can speak for at this moment in time, the MTFPs are based on an assumption of 1.99% each year in line with the referendum limit. I would anticipate that Dorset County Council has a similar assumption, and I would assume that Christchurch Borough Council is based on the £5 per annum annual increase for, if you like, district authorities. So that's probably my assumption in that regard.
Thank you, Mr Richins. Could you turn your microphone off? Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this one? We'll go to the recommendations then. Can I just ask, has everyone got access to these, the papers? Are you all able to see them? Because if not, I will read out what the recommendations are. Would you like me to read them out? Yes, right, I'm getting lots of nods. Okay, so, one, consider the medium term financial plan position, noting the caveats as set out in paragraph eight, which is part of what we've just been discussing. Two, note the intention to provide a further update report once the 18, 19 budgets of the relevant councils have been approved. Three, note that chief financial officers will now highlight in reports to the relevant sovereign councils any decisions which will have a significant financial implications for the proposed new unitary council. And four, note that once the shadow authority has been established, that the chief financial officers highlight to the shadow authority any sovereign council decisions which will have either a significant financial impact or involves a significant financial risk exposure to the new unitary council. Such matters will be included in the regular medium term financial update reports. Those in favour? Yes, yes.
An opportunity to debate at a time, please?
Okay, I thought I'd ask if there were comments or questions previously. So you now would like to, you have no problem with that.
Sorry, I thought you offered up to debate, that was all. What other queries or questions I have? You know, will the committee be giving an update to the Secretary of State on the financial position as opposed to the 7th of November information that was given, in order that he's aware of where we are currently today? This is by the end of January, I think the representation should be made. And is the committee likely to debate whether or not we would have a cap on any exit payments for staff at all? And I wonder whether or not it would be possible for a full financial position to be put forward with regards to where Bournemouth and Poole are currently. Thank you.
That's, I think that's several questions there, which span quite a few bits of our offices. So can we answer all of those today? Mr Richins?
Shall I have a go?
Yeah.
With regards to the exit cap, if we can take that one first, in the sense that my recollection is probably over 12 months ago now, government gave guidance to each of the departments with regards to introducing exit caps. My understanding is no of those departments have taken the opportunity to actually introduce an exit cap for a local authority or other officers. So at this moment in time, we wait guidance from DCLG as to when any exit caps would be applied. With regards to the financial position, generally what happens is, once the budget's set in February every year, local authorities are required to inform communities and local governments through some form, this is called the RA form, with regards to their financial positions. So that would be the normal manner in which we advise the government of our financial position. I think the recommendations of the report highlight the intent to bring further updates on the medium term financial plan, particularly one in February, once the February budgets have been set by each of those sovereign councils.
Thank you, Mr Richins. So back then, unless there's any other comments that wish to be made at this moment, we'll go back to the vote on those recommendations that I read out earlier. Those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Just for the record, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you. So moving to agenda item eight. And again, this one is for all members of the committee. This one's on disaggregation. So Debbie Ward?
Thank you, Chairman. This report simply sets out for you the progress that's being made on the disaggregation work stream, following the decision you made at your last meeting regarding the principles that needed to be followed in taking these essential actions forward. A pilot service disaggregation assessment is currently in progress and is on time according to the timetable in the report. This process will test the methodology that we're using, ensuring that both financial and service-based issues can be properly compared and the work progressed on a reasoned basis. As I said, the work is all currently on time, and the oversight group that's referred to in the report will meet for the first time next week, sorry. And it's proposed to take the outcome from this and the learning from the pilot work into the first meetings of the task and finish groups for both this joint committee and that of Dorset Joint Committee. And for their first meetings to take place in January. You're asked to note the report and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie Ward, very much. Any questions or comments and indeed any debate? Councillor Flag?
Thank you, Chairman. If I may ask a couple of questions. What was the cost in 2016-17 of services provided by Dorset County Council to residents in Christchurch? And how many users was each service provided? What is the estimated cost of those, cost for 2017-18? What was the yield of income to Dorset County Council from council tax precept on residents in Christchurch in 2016-17? And what is the projected yield for 17-18? And finally, if the joint committee will publish the outcome of the study into the financial impact of disaggregation of services provided by Dorset County Council to Christchurch residents?
Thank you. Are you able to answer that today?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm not able to answer the details of those with the accuracy that they deserve. If I'm able to take a copy of those questions, I wasn't able to catch them all into full detail, then we'll see what responses can properly be made for you.
Okay, can I ask how that response will be made? Will it come back to this committee or will it be made available before?
I'll aim to make it available before.
Thank you. Right, any other? Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a point which has been raised specifically with me by one or two of my constituents who are concerned about the impact of the, any change of services from Dorset County Council to whatever the new authority is called. If it is possible, the greatest fear is that people have come to rely on and trust and they need the support of their carers, a particular carer. And very often, and I perhaps should for clarity say that my wife is disabled and we have a carer, though that's provided privately, not through the county council. A lot of these ladies have had the same carer for many years, or people have had the same carer for many years. There is concern that as different councils use different care companies for preference, a change of council might automatically mean a change of company and therefore a change of carer. If this is possible, will the transfer team or whatever it's called seek to avoid this?
Thank you. Would you like to respond?
Thank you very much for that question. One of the first principles that this joint committee agreed last time, that there was no service user should suffer as part of this process and that we would seek to give continuity of service. There is never any guarantee that a carer is maintained, unfortunately, on an individual basis, but certainly that aspiration is built into the principles that you've already given us. Thank you.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the chief executives for their report on this. Just a reference to point eight in the report about the key component of the plan will be identification and management of risk. I'm concerned about this because obviously disaggregation is one of the big pieces of work that needs to be done. And in terms of setting the finances for the new authority, it would be important to get that right, and it's obviously the set timescale on it. And I know at the end of the report, it talks about summary of risk assessments, that they're to be tracked and monitored through the oversight group. I just wonder if they could expand a little bit on how we as the joint committee need to go about ensuring that risks are reported to us, highlighted early enough, and what actions we may need to take to sort of address, manage those risks, you know, appoint additional resources to address them, whatever.
Thank you, Chairman. Through the task and finish group, we'll obviously be working very closely with the oversight group over the coming weeks and months, and will receive the project highlight reports and the programme management. The task, the risk assessments will be completed and they will be part of the and they will be part of the formal reporting into each meeting of this committee.
Thank you for that. Uh councillor Crane?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It was just an observation really. Um, there was um some quite detailed questions from, from councillor Flag that warrant um quite a bit of consideration. Um, and of course, I think members would probably want answers to those questions um in due course before um the, the next meeting of, of this committee. Um, so I would just, just an observation. Would it be an idea if councillors do have significant questions to ask? If we had those beforehand, then we can probably get answers on the day um and then, then bring forward, you know, supplementary questions after that so that we're keeping up the pace, um particularly really pertinent questions around disaggregation. Thank you.
Yes, that, thank you councillor Crane. I think that's a very good point to raise and then would make it possible for members of the public that are present at the time of the committee to actually be party to those answers rather more easily. So I, I think we can take that one up. Are there any other comments or questions or any need for, further need for debate? Right, so we go to the recommendation. The joint committee is asked to note the progress of the disaggregation planning and high level plan. So I think we've, uh should come here, have a show of hands to show that we have noted. Thank you very much.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. For the record, Chairman, unanimous.
Thank you. So then, moving to agenda item nine, council tax harmonisation. And again, this is for uh four members only, I believe. Is that correct or? Um, I, it's for all members, I beg your pardon, because it does affect both sides, I believe.
It's for all members and then at number two is for decision.
Oh, right, yes.
Full members.
Okay, yes, the reason I've got two little notes to myself is because when we come to the recommendations, at number one, that's for all members, but at number two, it's for four members of the committee only. Okay, um are we all clear about who are all members and who are full members? Okay, let's just bring that up again. So all members is obviously every member that is here and the full members are those that are from Christchurch, Bournemouth and Poole. Right, so councillor Beazley, as Chair of the Task and Finish Group on council tax harmonisation, I'll ask you to present this, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, what I intend to do is just to set out the parameters uh of what we've been charged to do uh and the progress that we have made. Um, and then uh I will hand over to Mr Milner for any technical aspects of, of that before you go presumably to questions after that. And uh in preparing uh that uh look at the task that we have been given, um we, at our last meeting, you'll recall, um got a very clear steer from the joint committee about the parameters within which we were expected to work over council tax harmonisation proposals. Uh, and essentially, what the joint committee agreed at our meeting in November was that we uh needed to ensure that uh no council tax levels uh would rise at a rate exceeding the government's referendum limit, about which I spoke in answer to the public question earlier, and that it would include freezes or indeed even reductions in the absolute level of council tax paid by Christchurch residents. This is a complex issue, but not one that we can finalise at this stage. It's complex because the variables, the variables at uh item two of the report set out uh why that would be the case. So we need to determine, first of all, uh the period over which harmonisation will occur. Uh, we need uh to make sure that we understand the increases in council tax for Bournemouth and Poole in year one and indeed beyond that. Um, the possibility of freezing or reducing council tax for Christchurch residents, the impact uh of a tan council precept in Christchurch, if indeed that is the route that, that we decide to take in the future. And uh in discussion with the members for Christchurch, I don't think we're in that position at this stage. And most importantly of all, the issue of council tax foregone. So whatever that model is, indicates that there will be council tax that would otherwise be collected, that cannot be collected because of the constraints uh that have been imposed. Really important that those are taken in the round. So we started from the principle of looking at every possible alternative. And um officers um led by Ian Milner from Christchurch uh set out 18 different financial models for us to look at. Now, once we got the joint committee's steer at the last meeting, that made our task a, a little bit more streamlined because it meant that we were able to rule out quite a number of those options because they exceeded the parameters we'd been given. And that meant that at our meeting that's taken place since uh the last joint committee, we were able to bring those down to five different options, which we have now done. Uh, and those I know and the members of the task and finish group uh using those principles, we can look at, but not necessarily to come to a conclusion at this stage. The reason for that being that we need, in fact, we must have uh the work uh done um over disaggregation and the work being done over the medium term financial plan far more advanced and in terms of disaggregation virtually completed before we can be clear as to whether one of those models or more than one of those models can still be considered. Uh, and that is because the complexity of disaggregation, as you will have seen uh from the figures in the medium term financial plan paper, are complex. Uh, and in answer to other questions, it's not clear yet uh what the breakdown is between the constituent district authorities uh for uh disaggregation. So what we've done is we've looked at those principles and you will see at item eight uh on the report uh that we could achieve harmonisation uh uh by the end of year seven. Uh, if we did it uh on uh one of those models um around that, this is purely indicative, but I think it's important we understand uh the direction that we're going in. Uh, that would mean uh that increases of £29 uh within the current referendum limit would apply in Poole, £24 in Bournemouth. Uh, and that in Christchurch over those seven year period, there would be a saving of approximately £948 for a band D property. But I emphasise that's on current referendum limits. We've got no indication from government that that's likely to change, uh but that is a long period of time. And then uh the final bullet point there, the issue of council tax foregone, which I think lay partly at the root of the public question that I answered earlier. And uh that sets out within that model what that figure would be. Uh, so Chairman, um I think uh in conclusion, what I would say is that our models have now been predicated on no council taxpayer seeing an increase greater than the government's referendum limit and therefore nobody would pay more than they would have done had we not been undertaking local government reorganisation. Um, and we're slimming down the period into which harmonisation can take place. The government have said a maximum of 10 years. We're looking at models that will get us nearer to five years without uh having a council tax foregone figure that really means that we will, we are unable to deliver services to the level they are at the moment. And of course, most importantly, the issue of Christchurch having a freeze or indeed even a reduction. And therefore, once we've done the work streams uh around disaggregation, medium term financial plan, we'll be able to look at that, working within what the joint committee have asked us to do and come back with a preferred model, which we will then bring to the joint committee for a decision. If there are any questions, happy to try and answer them. If they're technical, I suspect Mr Milner would be better.
Thank you, councillor Beazley. Are there any questions or comments? Trish, yes.
Chairman, I did. Um, I did ask um if we can take the recommendation in different, in pieces. Um, recommendation one, okay. But recommendation two, I'd like to see the three bullet points brought separately, if that's possible. Um, my reason for this is we, we keep hearing that Christchurch residents are going to save £948 over the seven year period. This is hardly a saving. Christchurch residents during that period would be paying more for their council tax than Dorset, than Bournemouth and Poole. Um, Bournemouth and Poole, I think, will come out a bit better than Christchurch. Um, but we'd be paying more for the same services. Therefore, we would like to have these two bullet points separately, please.
Uh, thank you, councillor Jameson. Apparently it's at my discretion to be able to do that. Or, or I can ask the committee, shall I ask you, are you happy that I? Yeah, okay. Would you like to vote on it? I'll bring him in in a minute. That we take it separately? All right, shall we have a? All right, hang on, I've, I've got several people, let's do it one thing at a time. Okay, let's just park that for a moment. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, so I'm having indication from councillor Green, so let's, let's take comments first and then I have councillor James.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Um, I am part of the uh, this, this task and finish group, which has, as councillor Beazley said, looked at a significant number of options. Um, but certainly the boundaries within those uh, within those discussions have been around the unanimously agreed decision from joint committee last time um that we, that no council taxpayer would have to pay more than they would had a referendum, um sorry, had a local government reform not occurred. Um, and in structuring the recommendations as the task and finish group did, they were very careful to ensure that all potential possibilities that were acceptable to the constituent boroughs would still be included and not ruled out. So I'm, I, I'm slightly puzzled by the um, the suggestion about taking only part of that recommendation forward. And the reason for it is that while I fully understand the points that councillor Jameson has made about um Christchurch, Christchurch residents paying more than those in Bournemouth and Poole, as indeed they have done for the last uh many, many years, um, the actual wording of the recommendation has ensured that a possibility of the day one harmonisation which is being requested by Christchurch Borough councillors um has not been ruled out. If we, again, could, could take those last two points specifically, harmonisation across all areas is achieved within 10 years. Or whether that is one day or nine years and 364 days, that recommendation would still be acceptable within those, those definitions. And secondly, the council taxpayers in Christchurch area see a freeze or reduction in their council tax throughout the harmonisation period. And I would be most surprised if any resident in Christchurch did not want to see a freeze or reduction in the council tax. So I do hope that that would be unanimous, Chairman. Um, the number that's being quoted of £948 that would be saved by Christchurch council taxpayers um over the course of the seven years, should we choose that particular model for harmonisation, is quite scientifically and robustly calculated because the difference is between having a freeze for seven years or continuing to have the rises that would be expected without going through local government reform. And the numbers have been used to ensure that the council tax foregone, in other words, the council tax that isn't taken by the new unitary, which would have been had Christchurch residents continue to have the increases that they would under LGR and Bournemouth to a certain extent as well, doesn't exceed the amount of money that is saved by moving to the new authority. And that is the way that it will be able to, to pull that in. Indeed, I'll just go one step further and say that not only would Christchurch residents under this particular model save £948 over those seven years, but they would continue then to save approximately further £250 per year from then out into the future. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone, councillor James?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I am aware of the limitations placed on me in this role, so I will concentrate on the uh content of the report as it is on item one. And great though the temptation is, I won't speak to two, three, to part two. Um, Chairman, when I served on the county council previously, uh in my, the last, uh this is my third term, the first two terms, I was very much involved in adult social services. And in the last term, I was vice chairman of the Adult and Social Services Overview Committee. And I therefore have some knowledge and a great deal of concern for what is going to happen ongoing. Now, Dorset has been a prudent authority financially. We have increased the council tax as appropriate. Unfortunately, not all authorities in the country have followed this course. We, it is admitted by everybody that adult social care is a field that is going to be more and more demanding of resources as time goes by. So it is absolutely crucial that whatever forecast is made on which the, if it does go ahead, and that is not yet certain, the new authority bases its calculations of council tax are as sound and as robust as possible. Now, I have to say, I am afraid, having listened to Dr Rogers' question and uh if he had been allowed a supplementary, I'm sure he would have uh made one because I don't think he felt that the answer was satisfactory. Whatever comes forward has got to be robust. We must finance, adult social care must finance it properly. So I think it's fair to say that I do have concerns. I have heard the words that this is a robust scientific model and there was a robust scientific consultation that gave an opinion on the people of Christchurch and a robust and scientific opinion poll that said conservatives were going to have massive majorities and. But we have got to get this right. And I'm not, by no means convinced that the approach that is being set is going to get it right. Now, Chairman, I will not oppose this report because I think we must keep an eye on it. And I think we do need further updates in the new year and these have got to be rigorously examined by this committee and not just passed on the nod because this is absolutely vital. I think it was said as long ago as Roman times, money is a sinew of war. Well, money is a sinew of adult social care and if we don't get it right, there's going to be a lot of very disadvantaged people. Chairman, there's other things I would have said. Um, I would have said that the referendum in Christchurch was yesterday, so some comments are unnecessary, but I won't because you tell me I was out of order. So I will just say, I will support this.
Yes, I would.
So it's just as well I didn't say it, isn't it? So I will just go on to say, I will support it, but I will do my limited best to make sure that certainly as far as adult social care goes, the people in Dorset, for whom I am at the moment, bear some responsibility, will continue to be looked after properly. Thank you.
And I think most of us present would add to that children's services too. I think they're very important to include. Right, anyone else wishing to speak? Right, councillor Brown? I'm sorry, I've got myself a little, so councillor Flag first. Set councillor flag first, and then councillor Brown.
Thank you, madam chairman. Well, I think we're all familiar with the way the mechanism works, how tax is placed on properties. But it's not the properties that pay the bill, it's the residents, the residents that elected us to be sat here today. My concern is that if you take any of the protected characteristics under the Equalities Act and apply them to the fact that you've got different levels of council tax across a conurbation, all receiving the same services for different amounts of tax, that cannot be equal. I can't support what is on here this morning in the format that it is. Because harmonisation, to me, means an equal tax banding and preset from day one. This is a new unitary authority we're talking about, not Christchurch, Bournemouth and Poole. It's a new unity authority, and everyone who lives in that unitary authority should pay the same amount of council tax across the board for the same services. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you, chair. I've got one comment, and I've got probably four questions, actually. I don't know if you want me to go through them individually or all together for the task and finish group of the officers.
I think let's have them individually, we might be able to deal with them as we go then.
Firstly, my comment, just for clarification, there's been a lot of comments that, you know, council taxpayers in Christchurch will have a reduction, in Bournemouth and Poole will, you know, their increases will be within the referendum, et cetera, et cetera. That's obviously subject to a caveat, which hasn't been mentioned, which is actually, which we clarified at the last meeting, is DCLG that will decide on the number of years over which council tax harmonisation can occur. It's not... We can come up with suggestions and recommendations and models, but at the end of the day, DCLG will decide that in their finance order next year. So rather than this will happen or this won't happen, under these models, this could happen or may happen, but it's subject to DCLG. So we need to be clear on that. So my first question and point, I'm not quite sure who could answer this, is in the sort of suggestions, recommendations within number eight, it talks about harmonisation by the end of year seven. So firstly, what is the likelihood that seven-year council tax harmonisation will be acceptable to DCLG? My next question is that, looking at this, you know...
Can I... I'll just stop you there because shall we have that one answered now? Thank you. Who would like to answer it? Yes, Ian, thank you.
Thank you, madam chairman. As an introduction, my name's Ian Milner, and I'm a strategic director at Christchurch Borough Council. The indications are that DCLG are expecting a proposal to be made by the various joint committees, and the parameters that we've been given at the moment that it's done within 10 years.
Okay. My next question is, under the proposal under number eight, that the outcomes that the task and finish group have come up with, I'm querying why when it talks about Bournemouth and Poole council taxpayers, their increase, it talks, it places it as a per annum increase, whereas when it talks about the savings to Christchurch council taxpayers, it lumps it all together over a seven-year period. Could we not see them all on a per annum basis and all over the seven-year period? It seems to me it's like smoke and mirrors if you present the costs to people on an annual basis and the savings to people for a seven-year accumulated basis. I think we should see it all on the same basis.
Mr Milner?
Chairman, we could report that back at the next committee, if the committee so wishes.
Thank you. Councillor Brown, do you have another question?
Thank you. In reference to Dr Rogers' question at the start of the meeting, I'm also struggling to support this because it doesn't give us comparison with the figures which were presented to the public in the public consultation. Particularly when it talks about the savings, you know, this has been pushed through and the public have been encouraged to support it because it generates certain savings which will secure our service provision, including adult social care, as councillor Jones mentioned, for the future. But then this proposal talks about the savings, forecast savings for Bournemouth, Poole and Christchurch are estimated at this stage at ten point three million pounds per annum. Well, how does that compare with the business case that was done? How does that compare with what the public were told during the consultation? We're not given any of that information here, so I'd like to ask that question and actually be able to see that in future reports, that we need to know that what the public were told that LGR would deliver, these more detailed models, how does that compare with what the public were told?
I think that's probably something to bring back at another time. Yeah? Yep.
Madam chairman, I'm sure we need Mr Milner to be able to confirm it, but when we were looking at it in the harmonisation, task and finish group, we were told that that figure of ten point three million was taken from the future Dorset consultation, the one that went to the members of the public. So it is entirely not only consistent with that, but driven by that.
Mr Milner, can you confirm that?
Yes, I can confirm that.
Thank you very much. So another question, councillor Brown?
Yep, my final point and question I wanted to make is I read through this report, and I'm struggling to support the recommendations. I probably won't oppose them, but I'm struggling to support them. Because although I can see this sort of outcome that's been reached, as my old maths teacher would say, I give it half a mark for getting an answer, but I can't see the workings. Will it be possible for us to see, us as a joint committee, to be able to see the workings? You know, it talks about these eighteen models that have been looked at, and talking about five more models. It talks about the extremes between one and ten years harmonisation, between one point two seven, five point four four percent council tax increase in Bournemouth and Poole. But I'd like to see those models, I'd like to understand them, I'd like to see the workings, and even some notes from that task and finish group to understand the logic about how they've reached these conclusions. Without that, I can't really support this. And actually, I do think we should all be able to see the workings. How do we go about being provided that information? Can we have it provided to Joint Committee? Or do we have to go to the extremes of lodging freedom of information requests to have that disclosed to us?
Thank you, chairman. Well, I will answer to the best of my ability, and if you need anything further, Mr Milner, I'm sure will add to it. The purpose of our reporting back today is purely an interim measure, and as it says in the recommendations, it is that it is dependent on the other work that's to be undertaken around disaggregation and the medium-term financial plan. We will be bringing back the workings when we are at a position where we can make a recommendation, and it is then for the Joint Committee to make a decision as to a recommendation back to the Secretary of State. You will appreciate, of course, across all of those models, the workings are really quite complex. They are robust, but they are very complex. And it does seem to me that if we're going to rule out quite a number because they don't fit the parameters we've already set, then those workings aren't ones that we need to go through. We will hone in on those, and at the appropriate stage, we'll continue to do what we've been asked to do, and we'll bring those workings back to the Joint Committee for a decision.
Thank you. Mr Milner, do you wish to add anything to that?
No, thank you, madam chairman.
And I think I can confirm that that's exactly what we were expecting, that those workings would come back at the appropriate time to this committee so we could all fully understand how we'd arrived at that position.
Madam chairman, if I may also say, I actually have considerable sympathy for what councillor Brown is saying. And as a mathematician particularly, I would want to see those numbers. And I see no difficulty in the officers producing for all the members of the Joint Committee that particular example, that particular model, which is in section eight. It is very clear, and I see no reason why everyone shouldn't have that as soon as possible. But maybe Mr Milner could confirm whether that's possible or not?
I will take the direction of the Joint Committee, madam chairman.
Thank you. Right, so I've got quite a few people waiting to speak, so I'm going to go to that now. Okay, so councillor Mrs Haynes?
Yes, thank you, madam chairman. Just following on from the response that councillor Green has given, I would actually like to caveat that, yes, the information should be made available, but for members of the Joint Committee to be aware that this is actually a work in progress. So just because the figures say what they say and the calculations do what they do, that may not indeed be what we end up with as a preferred option. So that the information there is not to be taken as this is what will happen because it is work in progress. So I think that anyone that reads those documents and anyone that reads those calculations must, must bear that in mind.
Thank you. Councillor Mello?
Thank you, madam chair. Listen to the discussion debate on this issue, you know, at quite some length now. And as much as I sympathise with some of the positions of my colleagues, I do feel a need to challenge some of them. We talk about equality, but there's a question here, and a judgement call we as elected representatives have to make. You know, do our residents, you know, demand absolute equality or services that are significantly cheaper? You know, this is now becoming a, you know, a matter of fact. Is equal better when it is nine hundred pounds a year, nine hundred pounds over seven years more expensive, and then two hundred and fifty pounds a year after that? You know, if we've got a judgement to make in terms of what residents want from us, they want the services we could be delivered well, they want vulnerable people protected, and they want that at a reasonable price. It's now a matter of fact that there is nine hundred pounds saving over seven years for this proposal, and two hundred and fifty pounds a year going forward. I'd like to also say, counter-tax foregone, we can also be quite, you know, let's break that down, let's take it back a step or two. What council tax foregone means is money we haven't taxed, that's, you know, which by essence is more efficient. One of my colleagues opposite and I regularly this meeting, talk about social services and the most vulnerable people. That's absolutely, as I stated before, the main driver for what we're going to do. Local authorities have a significantly less amount of money coming to them, but we have an increasing demand for our most vulnerable. What other plan is on the table that is going to address those demands for our most vulnerable? And, you know, there's also a comment in relation to Dorset County Council's prudence, and I respect that, and I've worked with Dorset on a number of aspects since I've been a councillor here. So let's run through a few things. Have they... Well, what I think the councillor was implying was have they put up taxes consistently? Yes. Is there a huge deficit, the largest one cumulatively in Dorset? Yes. Do they run a two-tier system? And the only people to run a two-tier system? Yes. It is becoming mathematical fact that this is less efficient by running a two-tier system. So if I'm got a decision to make for my, you know, for my elected representatives, for my constituents, this is the only plan on the table that I'm very, very pleased to see the recommendations, you know, which can talk about, you know, seven-year reductions or freezes, and for my residents also having no more than a two percent rise. So I'm very happy to support this, and I'm surprised with the mathematical fact that some of my colleagues are perhaps struggling with.
Thank you, councillor Mello. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, chairman. I hesitate to clash with a colleague from another council, but we only... Now, and I'm a historian, and you only can judge the fact after it's happened. Anything else is a forecast, and history is littered with forecasts that have gone wrong and badly wrong. It is not disputed that every unitary proposal has cost, that has happened so far, has saved less and cost more than forecast, and that came from a Labour Cabinet minister, Mr David Miliband. So on that point, we are here looking at forecasts. And we are looking at forecasts, and I said this at the last meeting, I think, there's a lot of unknown unknowns flitting around. And one, well, one known unknown is what exactly DCLG will say. The forecasts on which this were constructed, twenty years council tax harmonisation was put to the public, we're now talking seven? Well, that's what, two-thirds nearly of a reduction? Now, my point is this. If we are going to safeguard, we have to make sure. We have to be fair as well. And I've the only... I cannot say, shut up, Jones, you're going to say what you shouldn't say. I will support this, as I've said, because it does mean that it will be kept under constant review. I would like to see all the forecasts. There are a lot of people who are much better at maths than I am, and I think I've shared councillor Green's, one comment was, Jones, you must know every blade of grass on that field, was said to me once. But as I said, there are people who know a lot more about this than I do, and I would like to see these tested by people who have an completely independent view. So yes, I will support part one. I wouldn't support part two, but that's irrelevant. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Yes, councillor Mello?
Thank you. As I appreciate my colleagues are historians, I did a history, I studied a history degree, but I'm also an accountant as well, so, you know, I feel relatively comfortable with some of the numbers.
Everyone?
Yes. Let's make sure we maintain proper respect for each other, please. Right, okay, so we have a couple of things to do now if there's no more debate on that item. So I have an amendment. Normally, I believe firmly that chairs should facilitate and lead through the procedure, but I do feel that we should have an amendment. It's a small one, so I'll say what it is, and hopefully someone will second it. So it's into where, of the recommendations, members include within the representation to the Secretary of State confirmation, et cetera. I think that should be adjusted to members provide assurance to the DCLG. I think that's much more factual and what we should be doing. May I have a second, er? Thank you, councillor Haynes. Okay, so with that amendment, we now have to decide how we would like to go forward with this. So all members on one, so shall we take that first, so we get that out of the way, and then we'll move to two? Right. Yes, councillor Brown?
Thank you, madam chair. Actually, now we're coming to the recommendations, actually, and having listened to the debate and the responses I've had to my questions. Could I also make a proposal? Actually, it's probably a sort of one B for all members to vote on, although one says members note the content of the report and request a further update in the new year following the work on disaggregation, the MTFP has progressed. Can I also add to one B that members request the detailed workings of all of the models considered, and notes from the task and finish group meetings on their reasoning also be presented to the Joint Committee at a future meeting?
On a point of order, madam.
I have a proposal there, just one moment, please. But we have already said that is the intention, that that comes back at a later date to the Joint Committee. So you're asking for something that's already going to happen. Right, so the proposal is there, so do I have a second, er?
On a point of order, madam chairman.
Yes.
Am I allowed to second?
On this one, no.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, so we don't have a second for that, but please be reassured that these matters are coming back to this committee. Right, so let's try again. So with number one, as it is there, I'll read it out for the public who are present. Right, members note that the content of the report and request a further update in the new year, once the disaggregation and the medium-term financial plan work has progressed further. Those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, sorry, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Those against? Abstentions?
Excuse me, point of clarity, I
This one is for all members?
Excuse me, I'm just, this is not because we should, okay, so number one.
Yeah, okay.
So for clarification, Chairman, that's 18 members agreed in respect of recommendation one, that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we come to two, and this is for the full members only, this section, okay? Right, so we had a proposal which is seconded on the table, that we took these items separately. So those in favour of doing that? Okay.
One, two, three.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Against? That's, oh, sorry, against, sorry, abstentions? Which is me, only because I'm the chairman and I think I should abstain on that particular issue.
Chairman, for the record, that was in favour, three against, twelve, one abstention, so that motion is not carried, Chairman.
Okay, so now we go to the recommendation two then, and again, full members only, so those in favour?
Chairman, can I just clarify, this is as amended with the revised wording? Do you want to read it out?
Yeah, it's, it's with the two, so it will read instead, members provide assurance to the DCLG confirmation. So it's just a little change of wording.
I don't think we need the word confirmation.
No.
Do you want to try that?
Oh, yeah, yes, we don't want to assure and confirm, do we? I think, you know, that would be a bit of overkill, I think. Right, so take, removing the word confirmation then. So again, members provide assurance that the DCLG, that a council tax harmonisation strategy is well advanced and seeks to ensure that. And then I'm, then we'll go straight into the vote then. Okay, are we ready for that?
So just to clarify, this is for full members only?
Right, so those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Those against? One, two. Abstentions? One. So for the record, Chairman, in relation to recommendation two as amended, those in favour thirteen, those against two and one abstention, that motion is carried, Chairman.
Thank you very much. There's nothing like a bit of council tax to get everyone exercise, isn't it? Right, so moving to agenda item 10, the structural change order, a report of the task and finish group. So councillor Drew Mello, as Chair of the task and finish, two percent, please.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. All members would have, would have seen the report, so I'll just very briefly summarise a few of the key, the key points there, rather, rather than going through every, every recommendation. At point three, we, we decided that we should maintain the, the current practice of including the names of the authorities in alphabetical order. So that's what will be going ahead on the, if we accept this recommendation on the structural change order. Points four and five, the, the technical vehicle we, we're looking to create is a shadow authority. And we believe that's right, it should involve all 120 members from, from constituent or authorities. At, at point 10, in, in relation to executive arrangements, we try to maintain some consistency with what we're already doing in the joint committee. So they're going to be along the, as we propose, the same lines as the joint committee. So 16 members, balance of representation maintained between Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul. There is a point worth, just, just flagging up here, we wanted to spend some time and take some advice in reference to how we're considering how that committee relates to, sorry, how that authority relates to Dorset County Council. And we're looking to see some report back on that when, when we next meet. The executive arrangement name will be called a, a shadow executive committee. Moving on to paragraph 14, the legal status is a borough council with county functions. And that is the same legal status as currently in Bournemouth and Paul. Lastly, we received an initial verbal update, reference electoral arrangements, which I won't discuss specifically in this report because I believe we've, we've got a, a paper further down on the agenda on that. But happy to take questions. As, by way of an update, we've got our next meeting arranged for the 4th of January. So I'm pleased to say we're working at some pace and I thank members of the working party for working hard on their diaries to facilitate that. Very happy to take any questions, and I'm sure Tania Colter and Andrew Flockart are as well.
Thank you, councillor Mello. Do I have any questions, comments on this item? I think, yes, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First point I wanted to make, just number 11 talks about the shadow authority will need to operate with the constitution of standing orders. And the recommendation is that operates with Bournemouth Council's constitution of standing orders. Just, I don't know, if you could expand a little bit on the reasoning for choosing that option? That's the first question.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Brown. Two reasons, two main reasons we discussed for using those standing orders. One, it's, that's actually what this joint committee's been, been arranged on, so there's an element of consistency. We didn't see the need to reopen a debate about something this committee had already agreed. And when we were debating it, we were, one of the public engagement, the facility for Bournemouth standing orders to, to involve public engagement was fundamentally important to us. So we're very, and there's a facility at the start of the meetings to do so, so we were very happy to, to move forward on that basis.
Thank you. Do you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for that response. A further question, item 10 in the report. The task and finish group taking advice on options for how the leader and shadow executive of the new council are selected. It's recommending, it's called a shadow executive committee comprises 16 members, balance of representation from Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul. And probably my obvious question, people will guess, actually is around political balance. As members are aware, I've talked about political balance in this committee, and if it was politically balanced, as the Dorset area joint committee is politically balanced, and this one's not, and should have two opposition members here to be politically, properly politically balanced. What is the view about political balance for the new executive? Would it legally have to be politically balanced? I know it was a legal technicality get out, but this wasn't, but would that one need to be?
Thank you, Tania.
Answering the legal point, there's no requirement for it to be politically balanced. In the normal course of events, an executive of an authority would be from the, would, would not have any representation from minority parties in, in, in any event, in most circumstances. This is a change away from that, so it does enable some representation from minority parties where in the normal course of events, they wouldn't be represented. So there is no legal requirement, it is a matter for the order to set out what the arrangements will be.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that response. Therefore, I'd just like to make a proposal then that I accept what the group recommends. I'd like to propose that we recommend that the shadow executive committee comprising of 16 members is politically balanced.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to turn this on. So that proposal falls then. Do we have any further debate? Anyone want to comment? Councillor Green?
Madam Chairman, if I could, obviously, we're, we're not discussing the situation of political balance. But I, I do hope that it will be down to the different authorities to choose who they are going to appoint in the same way as has been the case of this joint committee. And indeed, just to point out that the Liberal Democrats are slightly overrepresented, overrepresented on this committee than they would be holding as, I think, seven, seven members out of 120. So they are slightly overrepresentative by having one out of 16.
Thank you. It's as a whole that we have to decide this. We're very pleased to welcome you here. Your colleagues on this committee in Paul decided that's how it should be. Yes, sorry, and in my excitement of forgetting the other point. Thank you, Tania.
Thank you through you, Chairman. In relation to the first point raised by councillor Green, there will be a further report coming to this joint committee in January, which will set out proposals and recommendations in relation to the way in which members of that committee will be nominated and elected at the shadow council meeting.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on this item? No, so we're ready to go to the recommendations. So this is a decision by all members of the committee. Right, so one, agree, the recommendation made by the task and finish group as set out in this report. And that these decisions are communicated to the DCLG. Two, request the task and finish group to consider the other issues about the order which are not yet resolved and to report, report back to the committee on these. Those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Those against? One. Any abstentions? Chairman, for the record, to conf- Oh, sorry, one abstention. For the record, those in favour, 16, one against and one abstention. Those recommendations were agreed, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Right, so we're moving to agenda item 11 now, and this one is for all members of the committee. And recommendation, recommendation two for decision by full members. So, Mr Flockart, I think you're presenting.
Thank you, Chairman. In the event that the Secretary of State makes a final decision to go ahead with LGR and indeed, in the event that Parliament approves that proposal, a new electoral arrangement will be necessary for the new authority, both in Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul, but also in, in the, in the Dorset area as a matter of interest. So a new electoral arrangement will be necessary. In the view of the Department of Communities and Local Government, this could be achieved through a full electoral review in Dorset. Moreover, the department's view is that this is a desirable thing to do. Because a full electoral review would be consistent with the notion of the creation of a new council based on a new electoral arrangement. However, a normal full electoral review takes quite a long period of time, normally 16 to 18 months. So a bespoke arrangement would be necessary to enable the full electoral review in Dorset. And therefore, a lot of work would need to be done very quickly to enable such a review to be conducted and completed. Now, we've had advice from the Department for Communities and Local Government to the effect that this can be achieved through a new arrangement or a special arrangement whereby the local authorities in Dorset carry out, as, as some initial work to prepare the ground for such an electoral review. That work is detailed in the report in paragraph nine. And two of those pieces of work are very short-term pieces of work that would need to be completed by the end of January next year. That's a five-year electoral forecast and a confirmation of the size of the new council. My suggestion, Chairman, is that the, the existing task and finish group for the structural change order considers those particular issues as it's already established. And I understand the meeting of that group has been arranged for the first week of January. So that would enable a report on that to be brought to your meeting on the 15th of January. For the longer term piece of work, which is the third point in paragraph 12, which is consideration of warding arrangements within the new authority, I'm suggesting that a, a new task and finish group is established to supervise that work and to develop proposals for consideration by this committee and subsequently for a recommendation to the Department for Local Government, Communities and Local Government. Chairman, that's all I want to say, really. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr Flockart. Any questions for this final comments? Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. Through you, do, did I understand the officer to say that each individual council would be asked to undertake a certain amount of work in very short order for this?
Mr Flockart?
Yes, Chairman, the, the department is asking all of the local authorities in Dorset, but in this, in this case, it's Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul officers. This is to do specifically with a five-year electoral forecast to November 23, 2023. That is the work the department is asking to be carried out now, to be submitted to them by the end of January.
Thank you, Chairman. Further to that then, as there are still three sovereign councils in the area, is it, I beg pardon, four sovereign councils in the area? Is it, do I understand that it would be the decision of each sovereign council whether or not to cooperate with this?
I think strictly speaking, that, that's true, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Right, councillor Green?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and really just i- i- in line with councillor Morgan's report from the Bournemouth Oviun Scrutiny Committee and the requirement to, the recommendation that we speak in clear English. Can I just, just check that we're talking about in paragraph 12, which has the subsections one, two and three? Number one, when we talk about a five-year electoral forecast to November 2023, what we're asking the councils, this is something that we're asking officers to do, which is to report on the forecast number of electors that will be there for the period. For paragraph two, the size of both councils, one being the Bournemouth Pool and Bournemouth Christchurch and Pool and one being Dorset area, we're asking the structural change order task and finish group to come up with a recommendation for the number of councillors that will be on the unitary, on the, on the conurbation side of that. And for section three, the proposals for boundaries developed by the councils, we're asking that this go forward to a future task and finish group. So that would be the sort of plain English for those three.
Yep.
I can confirm what councillor Green says is correct, yes.
Thank you. Right, so sticking with colours, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, actually, it's a very interesting report. Thank you, Mr Flockart. It's, I fully support the idea of the full electoral review. I think that gets the best community representation under a new authority. Obviously, it, it says, obviously, it's a very challenging timeframe to deliver it in. And that's what concerns me, although officers and we, we can do a certain amount to help that. Usually when there's electoral boundary reviews, there's a, quite a period for sort of public and community consultation for people to lodge their views over those arrangements and alternative arrangements. Can I be assured that with the truncated timescale, that with a full electoral review, there will still be sufficient time for public and community and stakeholder engagement and consultation?
Mr Flockart?
If things go to plan, councillor Brown, as the Secretary of State has said he intends, and if Parliament approve the proposals for local government reorganisation, the Local Government Boundary Commission for England could be asked in June next year to carry up and complete this review. What I understand they would do is that in June, they would publish draft recommendations for electoral What I understand they would do is that in June, they would publish draft recommendations for electoral arrangements here and the rest of Dorset. And that those would be subject to public consultation from the end of June, from next summer, in the normal way that the Boundary Commission carries out that consultation. They will then take account of that consultation and propose a final recommendation which will be presented to Parliament in November.
Okay, thank you, Mr Flockhart. Right, councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. Through you, I understood that in at least one constituent authority, the officers work for the council and it's for the council or the council leadership to instruct the officers, not for the officers to take action against the wishes of the council leadership. I'm quite sure that's the same in all authorities.
That's better. Wouldn't like you not to be able to hear me.
Chairman, could I just clarify through you on the second recommendation? That refers specifically to the action?
I beg your pardon. I'm just clarifying and confirming that the second recommendation about a task and finish group, this is to deal with specifically with the work at paragraph twelve point three, that is, the warding arrangements specifically for a new authority.
Thank you, Mr Flockhart. You just stole my thunder because I was about to mention that. But I thought we ought to take it in order. So we need to decide whether we want to establish this task and finish group, which will specifically be for item number three of twelve. And in which case, I think we then need to put a little amendment in there to say that it is. So, right, okay. And with the amendment, so let's do the amendment first. Are we happy then that task and finish group, which we are going to set up? Those in favour of the task and finish group be set up for electoral purposes?
One, sorry.
If I can just say something here, I've, it's got a bit complicated. Right, because I have been advised legally that really, so that it doesn't get confusing, that we could have all members taking a vote for this particular section. But it would be entirely up to this joint committee. Sorry, I've got it wrong. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah, explain it again.
Purely to try and make things easier. Clearly, I failed miserably here. But it's purely in relation to, the proposals one and three are purely for noting and they are to include the two Dorset County Council representatives here. My view was therefore that you could put the full recommendations as amended to the full members. And that would, because there's no decision to be made on one and three. But if you wish to go through each recommendation in turn, just to be clear, that one and three are for all members and two is for full members. And it may be much simpler now, just to go through each recommendation in turn as an amendment.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to manage it. But let's go back to what I was trying to do. So setting up a task and finish group that will, with that amendment, so I've had a second for the amendment to add to two just at the end of that sentence, consider whether to establish a task and finish group to work with officers to develop the work described in this report at twelve little three. Right, so those in favour of that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. So, and that is also then, I assume, have I approved that as well? All right. Okay, so then going to one, so this is for all members. And note the report on electoral arrangements that could be put in place for the Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul area in the event of the Secretary of State making a final decision to implement the local government organization proposals in Dorset and Parliament approving the legislation. Those in favour, we obviously have noted?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Yeah, all members.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Any against? One, just for the record, Chairman, those in favour, seventeen, one against. Recommendation one is agreed.
Right, and three, we request a further report on this at its, at our next meeting in January. Those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. For the record, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Through you, Chairman. A sitting order under Bournemouth's constitution and standing orders for me to request that my dissent to item one be minuted. Thank you very much.
So we're getting towards the end then. So the forward plan, agenda item twelve. Do we have any observations?
Just this item won't offer in January. It'll be in February now because of that, of your vote on the last.
So that's the second one, isn't it?
The rest of your January agenda stance.
Yeah, so the item on electoral arrangements will come?
In February.
In February. Yeah, yes, of which obviously the date should clearly be twenty eighteen and not twenty, not twenty seventeen, rather going back in time. Right, so unless anyone's got any other items for that, I'll conclude by thanking everyone and particularly Christchurch for making us welcome. It's always a bit, you know, sort of unnerving when you come to a place to present at committees that you haven't been before. But we felt very welcome, so thank you very much indeed for hosting us. Thank you, everybody, and see you again.